Okay. Okay, got it, got it, got it. So Jennifer and I had spoken with Michael Santoro, who is kind of a guru for everybody at the Department of Housing. And we, and I think he had helped Jennifer's predecessor with looking at some of what she was developing in terms of fee and move, et cetera. But he said that he thought one of the problems with what we did is that, why is, I knocked that out.
Click on got it.
No, I did already. Can you click on that in any way?
Try that one.
Yeah.
I didn't click on it.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
Okay.
All right. We got shot.
I'm in control.
It takes a village to run one.
Yeah. Free hands.
So what he said is that one of the problems he saw was that the fee and lieu of was not based upon the total cost of construction. It's based upon building costs, basically. So it wasn't based on land, labor, everything. And the Stanford regs set some, and they actually set some actual numbers per 200,000 or something like that per unit that they regard. But so this, this was, this was his suggestion. You have comments?
Well, I, I think, I think we ought to be encouraging the zoning board to do its own research with our help to, to come to a conclusion that it works for them, but my, I, I, I don't like to think about it in terms of cost of building. I like to think of it like a, like the landlord would be thinking, which is how much is it going to cost me to discount this unit for 40 years? And that's a lot more money than it's going to cost me to build the unit. That's you know, I, you know, you've seen my little markup where I do my hypothetical situation, but it's by a factor of five or six, at least, that, that the, the revenue you sacrifice over the length of time that you hold the unit at, at 80% or even 30% of its value, of its rent is, is the big number. That's the, that's what concerns the developers, not the, the cost of building the unit. That's, you know, they're paying that anyway to.
Well, okay, let's, Sandy, can I just interrupt for one more? And just see up in the right hand corner, or the left hand corner where it says recorded way up in the just make sure you hit that when you're done, don't touch it now, but way up in the left hand top corner.
Right there.
Done with the meeting.
Yeah, hit the, hit the stop there. Okay.
In the first few minutes of your meeting, if you approve the minutes, you may want to reapprove them if you did that because that was not.
Okay.
This is the work.
All right, this is just the workshop. So is it, is that something that's going to be public? Or stood on YouTube to the public or anything?
I don't.
Could be.
Okay. Unless I think what really worked.
Yeah, right.
No, no, I was just making sure. So is this like a special meeting or something?
Yeah, it is. It's a special.
Okay. All right. So we should be all set.
Thank you.
Make sure. All right. So it is recorded.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
So to, so to continue, if, if, I think it's fair to say there's more than one way to look at this problem.
Right. Okay.
And, and if that's the case, then it's the planning board that ought to be. If they decide they need to adjust the fee, then, then they need, they the ones who need to initiate the, the study or whatever it is that, that gets them to where they think they ought to be. Because, you know, on our, our our position, my position is we just want more money.
Right.
A lot more money for the housing fund.
Okay, we do have that here as a possibility.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if you see Katie's hand raised.
Get Katie.
My comment is, is that when they come in with their application for a permit to build, they do not put in how much they're going to be charging for rent. And business wise, we know that they're going to take the total cost that it costs them to build it, build the apartments and everything. And then they're going to divide that by how many units they have and to try to recover their costs. I mean, they've gone out, got loans or bonds or whatever. And so they're going to try to recover what they have put into it. So we can say that they're not going to make the money on it, but we don't know what they're going to be charging for rent at this time. We have to think of that. That's where the fee and lieu comes in good. Because if it's on the total cost and that's paid after everything is built and in place, then we're getting the maximum amount of money from them. My other comment is, is like with the standard that's being built in the Holiday Mall area. That is being promoted as a mixed use family apartments. But we know that 90% of people going in there are going to be students and grad students. Now maybe the grad students will have families, but it's going to be a younger group in there. Families, elderly, they're not going to want to go in there, even if they've got affordable housing in there. Then they're not going to feel like they fit into the whole community, which these housing developments become. They're not going to be able to relate to anybody there other than, oh, you're the same age as my grandchild or something. Even if they're getting a good deal, they're probably not going to want to live in that environment. So that's why I'm still for the fee and lieu. Because then we build that up and we actually do build affordable housing for worker classes and senior citizens. That's the one thing I have heard in town is that we do need more housing for senior citizens.
Will, you did you want to respond to that?
No, I'm not. I just didn't want me to.
No, no, not yet. We'll, we'll get to that.
No, I agree with her.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, whether, whether they'll go in there or not, I don't know. Katie makes a good point. But if somebody, if somebody needs a place to stay and they can get a place to stay, then they might, they might, you know, they might, they might just go there. I think we've got people in this one over here that yes, through a center, all elderly people were.
There are, so, I mean, it would, to me, with the, the way that the standard is laid out, they have several different buildings. If they were trying to intersperse families in the midst of a bunch of undergraduates or graduate students, I could see where that might not be optimal for the families, but, but if they needed to live somewhere, they might choose that. But if the, the buildings were laid out in such a way that all the, the affordable units were one building or once, one part of the complex where families could go and feel like they weren't isolated, I think that might still work.
Yeah.
But, but my, my other problem is that the fee and new process takes forever. I mean, when, when are we going to have enough money to build one apartment for anyone?
Well, I, I don't think the housing trust fund will ever build an apartment, but it will leverage a lot of money.
Perhaps.
This is what Michael Santoro also agreed with, that, that if we have funding to give upfront, that that really jumpstarts and can, and expedites grant funding. Let me just say this, Katie, just in terms of what you were saying. I understand what you're saying, but let's remember that almost all of these units are at 80% of the median income, which is right now based upon Greater Hartford. He, Michael said that was really the, that is the standard in terms of where Mansfield is located. Higher than incomes are here. He had suggested we could say that it could be that 80% of Greater Hartford minus 10%. He said, we can, in the zoning regs, you can set anything you want. But in any event, these are going to be probably and most likely working families or retired couples. There aren't going to be a lot of these units, let's face it, in these developments, something, many of the developments, when they, if they're approved, they're going to be smaller than this one. I think this might be the biggest, except for the one they're going to do on King's Hill. So I, I think they will attract people because it's very difficult to find really nice
Where else is there?
Housing.
Well, my example is the Oaks. From what I understand, the Oaks is very, very nice. The apartments are very nice.
Very expensive.
But they're not.
But they're like $2,400 a month.
Right. Those are very expensive.
And they're not affordable units. They're not governed by the Affordable Law.
No, they aren't.
No.
We had any of that in place.
And the other thing is, we cannot tell the developer which units are going to be the affordable ones.
I'm not so sure.
I, we have no, we have no right or there's no rules that state that we can tell any developer, okay, we, we've seen your site plan. We want these 10 units over here to be affordable housing. And they might say, no. I mean, it's how can we dictate that to them? I don't even think the zoning has that.
Special permits, when they, in the case of the standard, they applied for a special permit, which is
Right.
is at the discretion, many elements of which are at the discretion of the planning and zoning board. And to the extent to which they exercise their discretion, they, they're, they can control some of this and they can say to the developer, you know, you know, we'll approve it, but we, you need to put these units over here, just as they say, we'll approve it, but you have to advertise to the least.
I'll have to see that to believe it.
Well.
Until you have to.
It's a, I, I would like to see it, frankly.
Oh, yes, I'd love to be able to tell them that these are the ones that we're going to, we want as affordable housing.
Right.
And, but again, we're dealing with a business and it's like, okay, I'm going to go into Big Y and I'm going to tell them what they're going to sell and what they're not going to sell. And as we know,
Not quite the same.
If they don't, if they don't sell it enough, they get rid of the product.
But the, the, the standard is currently being required by the zoning board to advertise to the, the, the part of the market that is least likely to rent there. That's a requirement imposed on the builders by the planning board. And all I'm saying is that there are similar kinds of requirements that the board could imply about, apply as, you know, where the buff, where the plantings are going to be and where the light poles are going to be.
We do, and that has to start at the very beginning. They've already presented all of that. So in a sense, it's a moot point with the standard because they've already got their special permit. They've already presented all of their stuff. Uh, so.
You're right, Katie, but what we're talking about are all these future developments and trying to get some of this done quickly so that we influence it. I mean, it's an interesting issue is if, if the zoning regs said that they want the affordable units to be cited in a way that is attractive to potential tenants. Do we want do we want them all clustered? I mean,
Could be a problem too.
That could be a problem. Well, not a problem because of the people. It could be a problem because people say, oh, that's where those people live.
Yeah, that's the.
But I think, I think if there was some kind of language that said that, that developers shall place the affordable units on the site in a way that is attractive to tenants. I, I don't know, something like that.
Yeah, I wonder if this actually falls under like three, like, you know, the, you know, how you have one, two, three on the first page, the second bullet, planning and zoning regulations that set standards for the number of affordable housing units and the fees paid. Like actually right there, it's that planning and zoning regulations set standards that support of an increased affordable housing units. Right? So really that second bullet, we can kind of spell out a little bit more, right? One way is the fees paid to the housing trust fund. A second might be to encourage how the development is built to ensure, you know, that we are meeting standards for different populations that need affordable housing. Does this make sense? How I'm saying, like, and then a third one would be, you know, we heard from the lady from ARP that said, what's it called? An accelerative dwelling unit, right? Like those would be examples of things we might say to zoning of like, here are concrete ways that if zoning looked at these rules and could ensure that, to help ensure that not only new development, but you know, like people that have housing units that are rented, right, that they could become, they could change them to be affordable housing units.
So, and I think, Katie, I think planning and zoning also, when it came to the standard, did not allow them to have locked bedrooms or to do other things that would make them look like individual rentals within an apartment.
Right.
Like that was just
Okay.
Board discretion.
So I put in here to assure that affordable units are cited in a way that is attractive to potential tenants.
And then I, I, yeah, I think if we could also have a bullet around accessory dwelling units. Cause we did hear from the ARP that that's right from the, all of that materials, that that's a really strong way to help seniors age in place with their families.
Well, I think that's, maybe what we, because we haven't gotten into that any depth. Gina, what I was going to say is, this isn't the end of the discussion. Right now, we're trying to urgently have them target this wave of development. The second issue now is we want to start getting into other ways of, you know, where there aren't sources of water. How can we afford, how can we encourage the development of affordable housing in other parts of the community? That we need to spend time.
The, the other thing that we didn't mention here before we got into the fee issue is that question of whether we should, as a board, urge them to only allow for the fee and lieu of in the, under the most extraordinary circumstances.
We did already say that.
Yes, and right, but it's not in here. So
Okay.
Because that's, that's the first, in my mind, that's the first thing they should say is, build all the units you're supposed to build, all the affordable units, all 15% of them. And if, for some reason it's too hard, or it's not going to work right, or there's whatever extraordinary reason comes up, then we'll talk about the fee, which, you know, which right now is inadequate. And it appears though, the board already agrees with us, at least based on what Jennifer was telling us at the, at the last meeting.
I think that there will be, so it's not really a secret, this King's Hill development. It's a very big one. I have no idea how they're going to build it up there in the old Huskies. And I think they're buying property that's, that places North Eagleville. It'll be a five story building. And they want to do more of a dormitory type building, which doesn't lend itself at all to affordable. But the amount of money that they would have to pay under the current formula is diddly squat to for them to get out of this. So it'll be interesting. I think they're ready and active, develop, active, given the permit to do it, but.
Have they already applied?
I don't think they've applied yet.
Cause that's.
And they're not going to get a five story building. We have a limit on only three stories. Unless you're the university and they can go higher.
Do it.
But the town zoning laws say only three stories.
Yeah, they have misunderstood it, Katie, or maybe some of it's going to be underground and that's how they get the five stories. Want to be interested. It'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will be interesting to see.
Okay, so I, so I added this from our, our last only exceptional stir to, sec, except exceptional circumstance with the developers responsibility required of the total unit speedway. And then there's some of the similar, some of your language fall that I've kept in. Now we're telling them, these are all possibilities because but, but the, but the whole message is, is that they have to, they have to, the fee and lieu is too, is too low.
Right. Yeah, how they go about adjusting, it strikes me as a pretty complicated, you know,
Yeah.
bit of going to require a lot of study. But not too much, because if they, they wait too long, we're all ruined, right?
Okay, so this, this one, I, you know, this, this has been a second micro since we all started with this. The using that Greater Hartford Metropolitan Area Income because it's higher than our area income. Now, Michael Ofcusi at Department of Housing said, we could stay, there's no reason why zoning can't stay, that it would be the Greater Hartford AMI minus a certain amount would be the basis for Tennessee and setting rents. Which would then be able to target people with higher need.
So basically we would set our own income limits.
Well, we would use a base.
Yeah.
But we would say that we believe that basis, you know, believes that base should be lower. It's the same way we would, as we get down here further from your and, and Will's recommendations, if we're going to ask them to target certain people at a certain income level or, or on the age restricted. We, all right, we did say here, shouldn't be waivers. Okay, we did say that already.
Oh, I see down low there. Yeah.
No worries.
No.
No, that's fine. It's just that I, I see it as part of, as the first order of business to give as many units on the ground as we can.
Absolutely.
So I, go ahead.
Did, when you spoke to Michael Santoro, did he say whether, I mean, this is his way of getting us around the Hartford AMI? Did he say why the, or does he understand why it's set up this way, why we're the only county that, that's not got its own system?
Most of Tolland County is included in that Greater Hartford Metropolitan Area for Planning and Federal Purposes.
I see. So they don't have.
They, I don't know why they see that as our market. When you think about it, our market is really, I don't know why they ever did away with the regional planning agencies that had a, that has some, like the one regional planning, that, that there were these, you know, planning areas throughout the state that had some relationship to what the markets were. Where people worked, you know, then where the kids went to school, what the kind of interaction was among towns, and that was all changed. So I, I don't know.
All right. So anyway, the, so the gist of this is we, we would like the zoning board to adjust downward its, it's the AMI that we use for the purposes of calculating affordable rents.
Right. I'm suggesting that.
Which would be.
I don't know, Katie and Gina, is that?
Um, I'm okay.
I, you need to rephrase it for me. Sorry.
By me?
Just rephrase what you were asking.
Okay, so this is under uh, four B on the second page, 80% there, I'll just highlight it. Th- this is what I said, that when Jennifer and I talked to Michael Ofcusi at Department of Housing.
Santoro, you mean?
I'm in Santoro, yeah.
Of course, he's on our.
Yes, right, I'm getting our Michaels mixed up. But we asked if that was what, if, he said, there really isn't a Tolland County AMI. This is the way it's defined across the state. These greater, these, these metropolitan areas, and we're in the Greater Hartford. But he said, it's up to us to decide you know, what we want the income levels to be for these affordable units and therefore what the rents would be. Because the rents will have to reflect 30% of people's, of the income.
Can, can't we just stipulate that?
That's what, that's what we'd want the board to do. We want the owners to do. Basically, we want to define the Mansfield AMI as 90% of the Hartford AMI.
Yeah. Which is a suggestion.
Right. Or another, some other number, some other percentage, right?
Yeah, that's, that sounds like, yeah.
Cause I don't know how these numbers actually, what it would look like on, in actual numbers.
Well, we'll see. Well.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I do think it's something we can look at in greater detail when we map things out more, right? And maybe it's something we say will be reviewed on a yearly basis.
Does the zoning code have to do this or is this? Yeah, I guess it would, right? Okay, so yeah, so, so this is another case where we're going to do, need a little more study to come to something that seems fair. But, but this is the idea, the general gist of it is to reduce the, the AMI because Hartford, we're living with an inaccurate system, basically.
But I think just to again reiterate that it's very important that the zoning make up their mind quickly, what, what they're going to do to increase that fee, what they're going to do to make these units more available because they're going to be getting, they're going to get these applications pretty quickly.
And we're talking about a thousand units, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
I've necked, I think Katie, that was the number she used. Kate, Katie says like a thousand units floating out there somewhere.
I think there is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And have put in for permits. And I noticed some are really dragging their feet now.
That's good.
What the problem is, but yeah.
Well, you know, the university's building like crazy too. I wonder if the, I've actually occurred to me that maybe there's a risk of this getting overbuilt for this, all this student stuff.
Wrong thinking.
And then, then people won't want to live at the standard because there'll be empty units over there for them to.
Well, that's the thing, the Oaks is not completely rented.
Right, yeah.
What isn't?
The Oaks.
The Oaks is not.
They've got, they've got plenty of empty, from what I understand, empty apartments that they have not been able to rent.
The rents are crazy high too.
I was just thinking that nobody seems to have a, any recognition that maybe rents are too high, just like they don't with that commercial space either.
I know, but at some point the market will drive it down.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I mean, inevitably, and that's why, I mean, I think all of those things are under, out of our control. In some ways, they would be to our advantage if there's too much. And then it, then it drives the market price down on everything because they want to fill them, right? So and I'm sorry, but I, I need to head out early tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye Gina.
Bye.
Okay, so this is the, the next one is, I'm sorry Gina's going up because this is one I thought you. Again, Michael Santoro raised with us as to what, what, what do you think is going to prevent the developers from renting an apartment to three students who meet the low income standards?
Isn't there, well, because the code requires three, three unrelated, maximum three unrelated people.
Okay, well, that's.
Right.
They could rent to three.
Yes, so they could. But don't, wasn't there some provision? Didn't we have some provision in the, in the case of the standard? There was some sort of Linda Painter had some sort of way of determining, it was written right into their approval, some way of determining that they were really low income and not, not just faking it or something. I don't remember, but there seemed to be the, some provision for that.
Well, what I, what he referred us to, and I, I looked this up. There's a definition under section A, so the section A cannot go to the following, anybody's role in it is, you know, student institution of higher education is under 24, is not a veteran, is unmarried, does not have a dependent child. They have a child, it's a whole different thing. And is not otherwise individually eligible or who has parents who individually or jointly are not eligible. And there are, under, under low income tax credit, they don't consider students in graduates head of households. If, if one of the members of, of the couples is not a student, then that, that's a different issue and they can, they can qualify.
So you, what you would be proposing then is that the code build into it some, some provision that would filter out fakers, if you would, posers. And so they couldn't, you know, get, get low income privileges when they're actually not low income.
Right.
You know, that seems like.
I mean, there are exceptions if, if, you know, there are some students who are homeless without question. But they're not going to be able to afford this anyhow, so. And then it's again, the oversight process, which the town, and this might be that the town council has to grapple to make sure that they're actually recertifying properly.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was, I had come from Paul, but it's really, the next piece is from Paul and Will. Paul was suggesting that at least one unit be set at 30%, I added maybe your 50%. And Will was suggesting that 10 to 15% of the allowable affordable housing units should be designated, designated as age restricted housing, which we would have to give an age for that too. We have, we can't just, we'd have to know, say what we mean by age restricted.
Oh, yeah, I, okay, I mean, we, I, we can put a number, whatever number we want. It doesn't make, you know.
EG over 65.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, in my, realistically speaking, it, it seemed to me that if we just said every housing, rather than use percentages, couldn't we just say you have to have at least one? rather than use percentages, couldn't we just say you have to have at least one? You have to have one unit for, for age restricted and one unit for the lowest income group, whatever number we assign to it, but that's our biggest need, these are our biggest needs.
Age restriction is one of the biggest.
So I think we can, we can say that the rationale for this is that we're meeting the housing needs of the community by making these requirements. Of course, it's gonna cost them a ton of money, the developers.
I mean, who would set the age, I don't know, I don't know who would, who would set the age, you know, I mean, it would be
Maybe some federal guidelines.
Generally considered.
I mean, I think that's just a given, that's why I just said age restricted, I figured that, fifty-five was just a given.
Katie, do you have any comments on that?
No, not really. I think cause age restriction is hard at times, and enforcing it. Making sure that everybody in the apartment is over fifty-five or that. Like, like here in Rolling Hills, they do a background check on you. You have to show your driver's license, you have to do all of this, you have to prove that you're over fifty-five. And I don't know how much they'll go into on proving it.
Well, it's one of the requirements that they have to certify, anybody coming in.
If, if the code demands it, whatever it is, then the town has to figure out a way to make it work, right?
And, and are you asking the planning development person, the zoning person, to again police it?
Right, that's, yeah, that could be a real problem.
That's why I see that we needed a little bit further up.
Yeah.
We need a means of determining that these are done properly, and my own personal belief is is that somebody has to contract with the housing.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, can we farm the work off to the housing authority, yeah.
No, farm it, have to pay them.
Well, pay them, that's what I mean, but some, in effect, because they're the ones that have the expertise anyway.
The building inspection department, they, they go around, they go around every year, there, there would be, I mean, that was something that
Yeah, that's a little different.
It could be that one day that they come and see your twenty-five-year-old son is not there that day, and they don't say that he's living with them, even though he's not supposed to be living with them.
In Rolling Hills, that's the case?
Well, some, some, some do, yeah, but
I mean, I, I wouldn't care about.
I mean, the town does, what is it, every two years, the housing department inspects every rental property.
Yes.
For the, the physical condition, pump the sewers, pump the septic system, check for good electric and all that stuff.
So they could just check that right off.
Well, but they might, yeah, but then I guess you would have to show them a lease or something, or the people, it strikes me as a different problem than a zoning and then the building inspector could.
I just don't know how it would be policed, but
Plain basis, I guess.
Yeah.
Of course, you're not policing.
Yeah, and that's in all these cases.
Yep.
Well, the town, that's why I suggested possibly a fee to be paid per unit to the housing authority, and that would be a semi-billion to the regs, but maybe that's a town council. I don't know if that would have to be a town council ordinance.
Oh, speaking of, of paying, Gina made the, the point, I don't think we've discussed it yet today, that the housing trust fund should not be strictly funded on the backs of developers. She was concerned that, that there'd be more, some more broad-based revenue source to fund this thing for, I, I guess for two reasons, one, it would be more fair if everyone contributed, and number two, we're more likely to get enough money to do something with if we spread the, the pain.
Well, Jennifer never came back to us, she said she was gonna propose that the town actually make an appropriation. She never came back to us.
Which they've done already, I think.
I think everybody, yeah.
They do a hundred thousand or something like that.
She, she was, said she was gonna request it and tell us, so we could support it.
I think I gave everybody a list of all the, all the different ways that we could fund this, that I got off of some college up there, and you know, that's some of the things that we should look at, you know, rather than just take, take it at
Can you send us that again? Do you still, do you have it?
I, I think I can find it, I think I can find it, if I can find it, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll send it on. There's a lot of ways, bonds, bond issue.
Yeah, that's
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, it's, you know, it's a, it's a way if we can just get around it, you know?
Yeah.
If we can get the people.
Well, and if, you know, if the state is really as, as gung-ho for building housing as it says it is, there ought to be some kind of grant money or something. It wouldn't flow into the house?
No, no.
No. Well, if it flowed into the housing trust fund, then we could administer it to, to whatever to builders.
They're not gonna give us money to be a grant or state money.
That's true.
But they, they'd be very happy to have us, you know, help leverage their money. But let's look at that list again, I mean, it's true, the town could float bonds.
Yeah.
The town could have an afford, you know, a fifty-year affordable housing bond, bond that floats. The town could appropriate money every year.
Yeah, yeah, they could, some of the taxes that these people are paying and give us a portion of the taxes that they're paying.
Yeah. Could just be an allocation in the general fund.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, then it becomes more controversial.
Yeah, but then everyone is sharing the, the pain then.
That's right.
Businesses and, and regular single taxpayer.
Responsibility.
Sorry, yes, that's the word they meant to use.
Okay.
We never talk about taxes in terms of responsibility, though, do we? That's not, that's not really in fashion.
No, that's not, no, they, they don't compute.
So how do we want them to propose this? We can just give this to them in outline form?
Okay.
I can clean it up, clean it up.
I think it needs to be simpler, frankly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get a lot of, a lot of points here.
Yeah, and they're, you know, yeah. Maybe I pick four, four, four headings, and then we just talk at them after that, you know, with some narrative, I don't know. Just, that's the way I would.
Well, the biggest one is the fee and lieu, that's what consumes
Yes.
Everything here. And then the others.
Well, your AMI, yeah.
Yeah, the AMI.
That's a complicated one too. But you don't need to, I mean, to what extent do you need to lay it all out, if, is this gonna be bullet points that we're gonna put in front of everyone? And they're gonna look at it and then we're gonna talk? Because we could have additional materials to bring to the, to the discussion that aren't built into this one document here, I would think. But for instance, Kylie's gonna do a, some sort of a graphic on, on the need, you know, so we, I don't know if you'd need to build that into the talking points necessarily. We could pass it out at the meeting. Just, I'm just thinking about how you be persuasive and, and clear and make it not too complicated in, in a short amount.
Well, I think we could, I can try to, if you wanna try to edit it, that'd be great, but I can try to edit this down and, and, and format it a little better. And we can give it to them, but we can, for the discussion, say we really we really wanna talk about basically, how can we enhance the production of affordable units, and what, what do we need to do in zoning regulations that make this more possible?
Right.
And so we need to look at you know, one of the big areas is fee and lieu, the other one has to do with tenancy. What we're basing the rents on.
The AMI.
And who was, and who was able, who was able to rent.
Could, could we organize it according to calls for action, like, we think this needs action, we think this needs action, we need, you know? That would give them, the zoning board a clear picture of what we're trying to get them to, to accomplish or get, or help with accomplishing.
With fee and lieu at the top of the list.
I agree with Paul, I like the idea of presenting it that way. The way he said.
Call to action, you know, point that they should we think you should do this, do that, do this next thing. You know.
Right, I think that would be a good.
Require fifteen percent building you know, redefine AMI.
Do the set of
Tenancy.
Yeah, set aside, adjust the set aside system.
Yeah.
So like four or five, that's five things right there, right?
And we can always go back when we begin if they need.
Yeah, but this is in one side.
It is, it is.
And they're gonna have to have some discussion amongst themselves also.
Yeah.
So I think
Oh, yeah.
More than us, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, I think, yes, I think we should do that, and we have the discussion, but I think if we have something that is a little bit meatier, we should just give it to them. But, in terms of some of their possibilities.
Yeah.
So do you wanna take a
I'll take a shot at it.
You take a shot at it?
Yeah.
And then you can technically schedule a special meeting in the night of talking.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just take what's here and I'll reorganize it a little bit to, to make it a pardon my expression, a PowerPoint presentation, which I've grown to hate over time.
Yes.
If Kylie wanted to like pretty it up after I've got the, the bones of it, that would be fine.
Kylie? Yeah, I got you. I'm known for my pretty PowerPoint presentations.
Putting your pretty up after Paul.
And unfortunately, I need to leave the meeting also, as I have another meeting tonight.
Sure.
Okay, I know, you guys have been great, we've been meeting every Thursday.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Take care, good luck.
We'll see you next.
All right.
Yes, hope.
I didn't see us getting into the the housing trust fund application, and I don't think it, I mean, it's, I wanna get this done.
Yeah.
But
We don't have any money to give out of it.
The application?
Yes, yes.
I do have one, one comment on page on the perform
Performance measures?
No, sources and uses on the next page, we've got that acronym down there, the Mansfield Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I don't know if you wanna leave that there or
Where, where is that?
Right there with the, with the purple sticker.
On the purple, okay.
It's pretty hard to pronounce that.
Okay. All right. Oh, that one, okay, that's under
So it's the very end.
I didn't know if you, if you wanted to leave that there, if nobody knew what, not, not
As a bona fide official professional, I agree with you, that should be fixed.
So, yeah, this is, I think this is something we're gonna have to do, but I you know, I, I think we should have, we have to agree on some of the basic requirements, but, you know, I've had it's a long time since I've written grant applications, and I don't know, I think we need some professional staff work on this.
I mean
It seems to be awful.
If someone's gonna come to, if someone's gonna come to the town, well, that's inevitable, I think, but if someone's gonna come to the town and says, and says and wants to say, I, I need help of affordable housing, I'm trying to do something with affordable housing. Who are these people? Are they gonna be individuals, are they gonna be companies, are they gonna be the nonprofits, what, who is eligible, or we should be able to explain?
Well, that's what I put in terms of priorities, we have to, we have to decide how, how they're going to be.
Yeah, so then once we figure out who can have the money, then we can figure out how to, how to ask, to find out about them, you know?
Yeah, right, we, we can get back to those priorities maybe at the next.
Yeah, that would be.
And those minutes, I just
I'll make, I'll just, it looks official.
Okay.
In five, in, in at five eighteen.
Okay, is there anything else then? We'll leave it at priorities on these firsts.
I'm gonna just try to redraft the, what we discussed here into something a little simpler. Okay.
Okay.
And, and I think when we come to the meeting, there's no reason why we can't bring supplemental information if they wanted, you know, if they wanna know about XYZ, if we have some narrative on a piece of paper, we can give to them, I don't think that's, there's anything wrong with that. It'd be nice to go away from the meeting with some sort of a written record of what we were talking about.
Yeah, well, so if there's, I mean, if you wanna use that outline for
Yeah.
Yeah, we can clean it up a bit.
Yeah.
Why don't I see your talking points?
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
And this is gonna be, I gotta get this done before
Next Wednesday.
For next Wednesday, okay, so it gives me something to do over the weekend. Starting tomorrow.
Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay, you wanna put that down on your minutes?
Six thirteen.
Okay, thanks, thanks Kylie.
No problem.
I know we're gonna lose you, so we're gonna miss you.
I'll still be around, I'll still come to these meetings, don't worry, I'm still gonna help you guys, there's still something that I care about.
Maybe you could be maybe you could be Senator Murphy's official contact. The housing needs.
I hope so, I know with casework, typically, at least when I was working for the House, houses, each caseworker has their own special area. So I'm hoping I get a choice, but I might just be stuck with something, whoever the last caseworker left.
Yeah, he's, he does have a big staff.
Yeah, he does.
But I loved his staff, I used to be on the National Mental Health Board and oh, it's actually, now that I think about it, it was Chris, it was Chris Dodd's staff.
Yeah.
His staff was unbelievable, they just we worked with them on, on legislation and the relationship to parity and he was quite extraordinary, yeah, that's unbelievable.
Yeah, that is great.
And I, and I've always had